Good morning, everyone. Let's call the May 12th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to order. Would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chairperson Jackson.
Here.
Commissioner Barlow.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
Commissioner Hassett.
Here.
Commissioner Neal.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Abbott.
Here.
Commissioner Alexander.
Here.
Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Vice Chair Gillette.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Automated announcement, please.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign machine. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have seventeen copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
The items with the recommendation made by the Commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Monday, June 7th, 2021, at 9:30 a.m. in this same location, with the exception of any continued items. Moving on to item five, need a motion to approve the minute meets, I'm sorry, the meeting minutes from April 14th, 2021.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gillette, a second.
[inaudible]
Oh, got it. Okay, thank you. We have a second. Those in favor say aye.
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 All right. Moves us on to item one.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Item number one is an evaluation of request for a special use permit for assessor's parcel numbers 113-02-002 and 113-02-003 to allow for a 140-foot radio communication tower and broadcast equipment facility in an AR-36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone in the Lake Havasu vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Open up the public hearing. Is the applicant here today? Wish to speak on the subject, sir? Okay, the applicant is available for questions if necessary. Do we have any other speakers that would like to speak on this particular item? No. Close the public hearing. Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for staff.
Okay, please proceed.
What is a legal non-conforming parcel?
Essentially, the parcel is smaller than the zone, but it was created, since the parcel was created before that zoning was in place, it's still legal and, and it's just non-conforming to the zone. And they're still able to obtain the normal permits as, as anyone, as if it was to the size of the zone.
Chairman Jackson, Commissioner Abbott, I think the easy, the simple way of putting it is it's grandfathered in.
Magic words.
Thank you very much. I didn't have anything wrong with it, I just didn't understand what the terminology.
To approve.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item two.
Item number two is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 306-09-057B from an AR-2A agricultural residential with a two-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Okay, open up the public hearing. Is the applicant present today? Any applicants? No. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on item two? No. Close the public hearing. Does any commissioner have a question or comment at this time on item two? Hearing none. The chair will now call for a motion.
Move it. We approve it, the staff recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Morris, and did I hear a second?
Second, by the new guy.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three.
Item number three is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 123-04-008 from an AR-36A agricultural residential with a 36-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR-10A agricultural residential with an eight-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Dutch Flat vicinity. We have received one letter of opposition on this item. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Open up the public hearing. Is the applicant present? No. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, wishing to speak on item three? Hearing none. Close the public hearing. Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time? Calling for a motion on item three.
I'll make a motion that we approve, item number three with staff recommendations.
Motion by Commissioner Gillette, looking for a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Morris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moves us on to item four A.
Item number four A is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 317-49-058 from an A general zone to a C2H highway commercial zone to allow for a commercial office, a retail building, and a billboard in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Open the public hearing. Are any of the applicants present? Kathy, Kathy, you wish to speak on this item?
No, I'm happy to answer.
Okay. Are there any other speakers that would wish to speak on item four A? Okay, hearing none. Close the public hearing. Does commissioners have any questions or comments at this time? Chair will now call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moves on to item four B.
Item number four B is an evaluation of request for a special use permit for assessor's parcel number 317-49-058 to allow for a billboard in a C2H highway commercial zone in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions with a note for item recommendation three requiring the spacing of at least 500 feet between billboards facing the same flow of traffic.
Okay, open the public hearing. Applicant is available. Any comments on this one, Kathy? Okay. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on item four B? Okay, close the public hearing. Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time, four B?
I do, Chairman, of business Tackett Hicks. Is that, is that billboard in relationship to the business that's planned to go into that acreage there?
Good morning, Honorable Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. So, there's been a rush. Actually, I'm glad you brought me down because I've processed, you know, three, four SUPs for the billboards. So, it's all in connection with the I-11 corridor. There's been a lot of activity down in this area with new, couple of new gas stations and, I mean, some nice facilities. So, the billboard allows for an off-premise advertisement. So, it's designed to work with the I-11 corridor. So, it is not confined to just that site facility, although ADOT requires that there be a commercial facility within a thousand feet. So, there'll be a new building plus the billboard and 500-foot separation. So...
Thank you for your answer.
I have a question, Kathy.
Yes, sir.
I drive by there and I keep seeing all that land cleared off. I'm just curious, now, it doesn't really apply to this, but what is all that behind where your zoning notice is cleared off? What's that cleared off for?
On this parcel?
Yeah. Well, no, there's a large parcel of land.
Uh-huh.
Straight behind your zoning notice sign.
Can we have a map of what he's talking about?
Right along the, the main highway.
Um... The answer is, I'm not sure. I'm sorry. I'd have to look at the maps and see. I have processed some other items in the area. I don't know what it is. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, I hate that if you catch me and I don't know the answer.
You usually know those things.
I know.
I don't even know what the question is.
Add mark.
Any other questions or comments for Kathy?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments at this time? Nope. Okay, chair will call for a motion on item four B.
I'll move to approve item four B with staff recommendations.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Moves on to item five.
Item number five is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 308-25014 from an AR-36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR-12A agricultural residential 12-acre minimum lot size zone to bring the property into compliance and to allow for a minor land division in the Mineral Park vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Okay, opening up the public hearing. Is the applicant available? Yes. Yes, please.
Good morning again, Kathy Tackett Hicks. I just wanted to clarify one item. I had submitted on the site plan that there would be a proposed 60-foot ingress egress in between these two parcels, and it's not required at this time. So, there's legal access to the property, there's nothing unusual, but the owner was very insistent that they don't want that. So, I just wanted to clarify, what I submitted would not have that ingress egress, and also that it's not required anyways. If you have any questions, I'm happy to. There's nothing unusual about this split. We get it in compliance, split it in half. It has legal access.
Any comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Kathy.
Thanks.
Do we have any other speakers on item five? Any other speakers for item five? Okay, close the public hearing. Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time? Nope. Calling for a motion on item five.
I make a motion that we accept, item five, with staff recommendations.
Got a motion by Commissioner Gillette. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving forward to item six.
Item number six is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 317-36-094 from an AR-36A agricultural residential with a 36-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR-5A agricultural residential with a five-acre minimum lot size zone to bring the property into compliance in the White Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Okay, opening up the public comment. The applicant is available. Any comments on this item? No. Do we have any other speakers that would wish to speak on item six? Close the public comment. Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It's me. I just have one question. Are there plan, are, are there plans to divide this property?
Honorable Chairman, Commissioners, no, this was already divided. It's not compliant. He cannot get a building permit until he gets it into compliance. So, this was created, I don't know, by a parcel plat or, not a parcel plat, probably a record of survey. So, he's just trying to get it in compliance.
So, it already has five-acre plots?
Yes, he does. He just doesn't have the correct zoning.
Well, as everybody knows, my pet project is access to properties.
Uh-huh.
And if, since this is already divided, are there access, is there access to all seven of the five-acre parcels?
I do not know if there's access to all seven of those five-acre parcels. It looks like on the map here that there is access through one of these other splits, and I guess I can see how that was split by parcel plat or something. It is kind of unusual. Those are only one-acre lots. But I can check further into the access. It looks like this one has some access to it. I don't know how they were split or when they were split. I don't know if staff knows that. No, we don't.
Well, that's my major concern. I totally understand him wanting to come into compliance.
Right.
But I think that in the process of doing that, that there should be some provision for access to the back properties.
Yeah. So, like I said, it looks like there's some access here, but my map doesn't, isn't big enough to see where it gets down to the front. I don't know how these were split to begin with. And I agree with the access. I mean, you can't do anything with it without access. You can't do anything with it right now because it's improperly zoned.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
In our staff rec, we've indicated that it does have legal access. It appears to have legal access, and our planner, Hunter White, has done a little bit more research on that. I'll let him expand on it.
Yeah, there is an ingress and egress easement that runs from, I don't have the map, but from the road that's to the west of that property and extends to where you see the T-bone in the...
Okay.
Giving access to all seven pieces?
I'm, I don't know about all seven pieces, but at least the ones from that parcel to the west all have any access to an ingress egress easement.
This, this item is only for the parcel in question, the...
I understand.
Yeah, so this one, when we researched it, it did have easements and legal access to the site.
But not to all of them.
To this parcel. We don't know. We didn't research the other ones because they weren't for this item.
I understand. Thank you. I appreciate it.
I have a question for staff. There used to be, maybe still is, and if my memory's wrong, my, that there used to be a 40-acre parcel, if you split it more than five times, you had to do some type of a subdivision. How did this get into seven parcels? And are we right in approving it when many times I've seen them five only, and now we're faced with seven parcels in a thirty, well, let's say four, it's a 40-acre parcel?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Abbott, you're exactly correct. We're, our land division regulations only allow for five splits for a minor land division regulation, for a minor land division. Six or more would require subdivision processes and, and infrastructure and improvements to the, to those splits. There's many different ways that you can split property within the county, and a lot of it doesn't have to go through our office. You can split by deed. You can split by a record or survey, parcel plat. We do see the parcel plats come through our office, and, and we notate when they are more than the five and, and recommend them to go through the subdivision process. These were probably split some time ago that, and, and not by one of those preferred methods that we review. So, we don't see them always come across our desk. The Department of Real Estate also has a statute of limitations on splits that if they've been done for five years prior to any future splits, that they can continue to split it. So, we would have to do more research on this area to see when those parcels were split and how many were split at one time. And it's my indication that it was quite some time ago that these were split and that at the time, they probably didn't meet the subdivision requirements, but the five years of statute of limitations has passed, is my understanding.
But, but my question then comes up with another question is, it's now come before you guys, and you're recommending to accept it. Where if I brought one before you for 40 acres and wanted more than five splits, you wouldn't allow it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Abbott, that's correct. We, we're actually dealing with one up in the strip area that they have split it 12 ways, and we're not, and we've, we've kind of taken the stance that if the Department of Real Estate is pursuing enforcement actions on them, then we would let them pursue their, their actions before we do anything. And they are, are pursuing enforcement on the one that's done in Littlefield area. There's 12 splits that were done. Ones that were split prior to our knowledge, we're, we haven't, we're not actively going out and looking at all of Mojave County to see which, which parcels have been split, but the ones that do come before our desk right now are the ones that we're able to enforce and, and take action on. Yeah, I don't know if that answered your question or not.
It doesn't.
Well, it, it, it explains it some, but it doesn't answer my question.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Abbott, so I deal with lots of land, as you know, and I see these instances all over the place. I see these instances all over the place, and it doesn't mean that it's illegally split by any stretch, so the state rules is, I mean, if I'm the owner of the forty acre parcel, and I've sold twenty acres to you, and I did not know you, it was an arms-length transaction, at some point in the future, you could break that down, in compliance with the existing regulations. I mean, it used to be that people would just, you know, transfer by deed, oh, I'm splitting this, I'm giving it to my kids. Just because there's a situation where an initial forty acres is now eight parcels, or whatever it is, to me, does not mean that it's illegal. I mean, that is not the first thing that comes to my mind. What comes to my mind is, there have been several owners, and they have chosen to do, within the law, how to, you know, to split these things. The problem with this one, and some of these owners, is, I mean, there are other five acre lots around here, so this person bought a five acre thinking it was good, and now he can't get a building permit. And so I agree with Scott on, I mean, there is a timeframe. If this had just happened last year, it would be a different situation, but, you know, it's a reasonable use in the area, and we want them to be legal. So, I mean, it's kind of a touchy thing, but the first thing comes to my mind is not, oh god, everyone's illegally splitting. That's not the first thing that comes to my mind, but it does happen.
I was just trying, I was just trying to get some clarification, because I could do what I just told you, and have two fifteen acres and three five acres, and that would conform to a forty acre split today, partial as you allow it. And then, the person that bought fifteen can come right back and ask for it to be split in one acres, or two acres. So, I never, I never quite agreed with that, but it was a rule, and, and I abide by it when it applied to me, and, yeah, I just...
The other lever that the county...
I guess, I mean, we've discussed it enough to...
Well, I just want to say, one other lever that the county uses, if it gets to be solo, especially in a rural area, so I know if an owner comes back to me in this area, maybe wants a one acre site, it, they'll, they'll also make that owner process a general plan amendment. It gets expensive for them to keep, you know, trying to break it down, there is a natural point, and it's normally the, you know, four, five, eight, ten acre site that they kind of stop in the rural area, because then you have the next level of approvals to go through. So, it, that does help. It stops some owners, when I explain to them.
I'm not against what you're doing.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not either.
Commissioner Martin has a question.
It's just a statement, the way I understand the subdivision reports with ADRE, that if you are a seller owning five or more parcels in a tract, you're obligated to the subdivision requirements to, when you sell, to provide a buyer with a public report. And a lot of these sellers are not using agents, so they get through that loophole.
Well, I have one clarifier for that, so the public report is strictly a disclosure document, so they just have to disclose what it is. They can own ten lots in a subdivision, as long as they don't sell them, they don't have to have a public report. Once they choose to sell, they do have to have a public report, but because they own ten, doesn't mean that they are a subdivision, that's just a state-level disclosure document.
Right, but it's upon selling.
It is upon selling, yes.
Comes into play.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question.
Yes.
Of Kathy.
Yes.
I think what I'm hearing you say, is that one person doesn't own this whole forty acre parcel, that it, that it already is owned by several different people, and the person that you're representing only owns five acres. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And you're in fact here just looking to get the property into compliance.
That's correct.
So, with that being said, I mean, I don't have any further questions, but I would like to make a motion if you're ready.
I actually would have a question.
Have a question?
Yes. In, in that we are trying to bring this into compliance, is there anything that keeps staff from making a recommendation, that as we correct this, that we also ask the property owner to designate an easement, so that the next lots continually, I mean, I can see a roadway there, but, and, and I don't know if we can require that of the owners as we do these kind of splits, but, you know, like Commissioner Gillette's concerned about the, the right of way, I would think that this would be a perfect time, unless there's some sort of law or regulation that keeps us from doing that, but to require the owner to also dedicate an easement, a roadway easement, on that particular, where the roadway is, end of their property. I, I don't know if that's possible or not.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Alexander, that is something that you could condition on these rezones, is that the owner will provide legal access. As far as our research is concerned, we did find an easement all the way to the property that's already existing.
It's existing, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have another question.
Yes.
So you're saying that you, there is an easement to all the properties, or to just this one property?
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, Commissioner Gillette, we didn't research all of the properties because we're only, we're only hearing this one property. It would appear that that, that easement accesses those properties, and to answer your question earlier, they, I just looked up, they're all, they're all individually owned by different property owners, and that's also a way that they can split and divide property without going through the subdivision requirements, because one owner would split a parcel, and then five years later, another one would split a parcel, and they'll still meet our requirements. But, so they're all individually owned, the easement that we researched had access to the parcel that is in question, but it does appear that it looks like it services the, the other parcels.
Well, my point is, in this particular instance especially, since they're already sold, they already belong to different people, that somewhere along the line, we are going, even if it's not our duty, someone's duty has to be, to make sure that these parcels that are being split all over this county are, have egress and ingress to them. And they keep slipping through the cracks of our rules and regulations, and someone has to stop that, because people are out there who own property that they cannot get to. And so, that's just my point, that we, somewhere along the line, one of us, one of our organizations, one of our boards has to stop it, it has to stop.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If you would. I would consider the, the possibility that we could, or should, condition the approval of a, of a rezone in this type of case, to have the applicant, or his rep, or the representative, demonstrate that there is legal access to a county-maintained road.
That's fine.
That's it, you know, I mean, that would, and, and we probably should ask for that on all of them that are at least suspect.
I agree.
It is on the application.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
To that point, Commissioner Morris, most, most of the rezones that we do process, and where they're looking to do a minor land division, that is a condition that we place in the standard conditions, is that they have to have legal access, that they'll submit a parcel plat for review that shows that they have that legal access. So that is a condition that we, we place on normal rezones, this is a, one coming into compliance, so everything is already existing, but that is, that is a condition we do place on our rezones.
In, in general, but not specifically asking them to demonstrate it for this one.
Yeah, not for this one, because it's, it's already all in place.
But if we rezone it, and allow a house to be built there, and there is no legal, legal access to it, the county could be in a, in a libelous position for that.
Chairman Jackson.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris, Jeff Haas from County Attorney's Office, the way that the county deals with that is, in the application process and the investigation, like here, planning and zoning, or Development Services looks to ensure, and the planners look to ensure that there is legal access when this is put in front of the commission. And here, they have determined that there is legal access to this parcel. Whether there would be legal access to additional parcels, is something that could possibly be looked at, but it wouldn't necessarily affect the zoning in this instance. If another parcel wants to have a rezone, then that would be looked at, legal access is something that would be investigated, and that would be put in front of the board, or in front of the commission as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Maybe I missed something, but I heard that they determined that this parcel has legal, has, has an easement on it. I didn't hear about anything from this parcel to a, to a publicly maintained road. That's my concern. What's offsite?
Legal access to the parcel, that terminology encompasses legal access to county-maintained roads at some point, through the arterial system. When, when they, when they investigate and determine that there is legal access, it's not a landlocked parcel anymore. It, it can get, if you were trying to get off of the parcel, you could get to county-maintained road, correct.
Maybe I mis, misheard that, because I didn't hear that in the explanation.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It's me again. What, I totally understand what you're saying, because what you're saying is this parcel, but by, by making this parcel legal, we're also making all the other parcels legal.
No.
Is that correct?
No.
That's not correct.
So, so we're not talking about the thirty-six acres any longer, we're talking about five acres.
This five acre parcel. This five acre parcel is being, is, the request is that it be rezoned. None of the other five acre parcels are before the commission at this point.
Is that because they already have dwellings on them?
It's, they're not here because they haven't put in an application.
Okay.
If at some point, they, a neighboring parcel were to put in an application, again, then investigation would, would be conducted, and the planner would determine whether there was legal access to that parcel, and that would, that information would be placed in front of the commission.
Commissioner Mill, question?
I have a question for staff. Being, being this bag of snakes has been opened, and staff has mentioned that a lot of land splits do not come through your, your board, and I understand that, would it be possible, and it's just a question, somewhere down the line, that if a residence was built on, on a parcel that did not have access, for, for, for that to be part of the, the, the deal for the, for the, the permit? That way, it would help, that the way I am looking at it, that way it would help get rid of these, of these parcels that did not have access, what I'm trying to spit out, excuse me.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mill, we cannot deny a permit based on legal access, that's not something that we can do, but we can deny permits if they do not have the proper zoning. So these, these surrounding parcel, parcels that are zoned AR thirty-six A, do not comply with our zoning, and so currently, none, none of these lots can come in and apply for building permits, and we won't, we won't issue building permits until they come in and do a rezone, which I believe is why this one is before you today, they want to build on their parcel. So we did the research, they do have legal access, and now they're rezoning their parcel to be in compliance. And now, once that, once the zoning comes into effect for that parcel, then they will be able to come in and get building permits. The surrounding parcels do not comply, there are, there is a parcel that looks to the southeast, one of those five acres was rezoned to AR, which is just a, a one acre minimum lot size, and they, they are, they are in compliance, and it looks like they have legal access as well.
Thank you.
But, but to deny a permit based on legal access, we cannot do.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I understand that, that, that we cannot deny the, the rezoning for this property. I just feel that somewhere along the line, we're going to have to figure out a way, that even, even if the properties have access now, because the, the owners in front of them have let them do it, when those properties are sold, the new owners can say, no, I'm sorry, you're not coming through my property anymore. So I think that the county itself needs to solve this problem.
You can't stop somebody if you've been allowed.
I understand.
Yes.
Chairman Jackson, Commissioner, and Vice Chair Gillette, just to, the process, there is a failsafe in the process here, and the failsafe is, if they're not properly zoned, they won't get a building permit, okay? And for example, here in, on this thirty-six acre parcel, or prior thirty-six acre parcel, some of the new smaller pieces do, are not properly zoned, and therefore, they would have to come before this, this commission, to get properly zoned, so that they can get a building permit.
Which would be in compliance.
Which would be in compliance.
And at that time, we could make sure that they have access.
Correct.
That's part of the standard conditions, right Scott?
So it's determined by zoning.
The, the building per...
And essentially, yes.
Yeah, they, they, the prerequisite to getting the building permit is to be in compliance with the zoning ordinances. If they're not in compliance, then they have to come before this commission to get that, to get the rezone, and one of the conditions that can be placed on them is making sure, and is placed on them, is making sure they have legal access. Whether that's through a, an easement, whether that's through being right on a, a county right of way, or, or something of that nature, but legal access has to be something that they, legal access is something that's investigated here, and put before the board, and if, if it's not there, then the board can deny the, the rezone. In this particular instance, on this parcel, that doesn't appear to be an issue.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion for item six?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept this item with the board, the staff's recommendations.
I'll second.
Do we have a motion in a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you Kathy. Moving on to item seven.
Item number seven is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number three five four, five four, zero zero five, from an AR thirty-six A agricultural residential with a thirty-six acre minimum lot size zone, to an AR ten A agricultural residential with a ten acre minimum lot size zone, to allow for a minor land division in the Cedar Hills vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Okay, thank you. Open the public hearing, do we have an applicant available for this item seven? Any applicants? No. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on item seven?
Somebody Kathy's not representing.
Okay, close of public hearing, does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time? Hearing received, none. Chair will now call for a motion on item seven.
I make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
Got a motion by Commissioner Abbott, a second?
Second.
And have a second by Commissioner Kelly. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight.
Item number eight is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for assessor's parcel number three three six, zero one, zero four zero, to allow for a mobile substation and laydown yard, in an RE one A residential recreation with a one acre minimum lot size zone, and a C two one A general commercial with a one acre minimum lot size zone, in the Mardian Ranch vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Open the public hearing, do we have an applicant or available for this item? No. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on item eight? Do we have anyone wishing to speak on item eight? Have none. Close the public hearing. Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time? Item eight.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for staff.
Commissioner Mill.
What the hell is a mobile substation?
Commissioner Mill, Chairman Jackson, the applicant describes the mobile substation as a, something of a, something of a transformer, a station where they can continue to transfer power throughout the county.
Just curious.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, looking for a motion for item eight.
I make a motion to approve item eight with staff recommendations.
Second.
Do we have a, a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine.
Item number nine is an evaluation of a request for a rezon of assessor's parcel number 20417022 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36 acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 13A agricultural residential 13 acre minimum lot size zone and an AR 10A agricultural residential 10 acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Cedar Hills vicinity. The applicant is proposing that the area north of Mountain Shadow Road will be rezoned to the AR 10A zone and the area south of Mountain Shadow Road will be rezoned to the AR 13A. And the applicant is seeking to create three parcels with this rezon. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Okay, thank you. Opening the public hearing, is the applicant available? Would you like to speak on the item eight? Are you open for questions if the commission has any questions? Okay. The applicant is available for questions. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on item nine? Okay. Close the public hearing. Does any commissioner have questions or comments at this time? Item nine. Okay, looking for a motion for item nine.
I make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
A motion by Commissioner Abbott, looking for a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gillette. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion carries. Item 10.
Item number 10 is an evaluation of a request for a rezon of assessor's parcel numbers 31012076 and 31012077 from an AD airport development zone to a CRE, commercial recreation zone, to allow for an agricultural community exploration and education in the Kingman vicinity. The applicant's seeking also to put a single family residence on the property. Staff recommends denial of the proposed rezon for the following reasons. The rezoning of a parcel to CRE would be considered spot zoning and the surrounding area does not contain other uses similar to the proposed action here.
All right, thank you. Opening up the public hearing, do we have the applicant available? Yes, would you like to speak on it, sir? Come to the podium if you would and state your name and address.
Address 485 East Lum. So originally, what we want to do is, is start up a little like petting zoo thing out there. It's out of the way, out of everyone's hair. I need somewhere to place the animals so we can have access to them closer to town. So we can take them to like churches and stuff like that for church events. And I've also want to make the, the property available why I'm rezoning so the like Girl Scouts and potentially a school and field trips can potentially go out there, interact with the animals and all that stuff.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have a question for the applicant. Did you know that the staff recommend not approve it?
I did not know that, no. I was told my best bet was to turn it into a CRE. I can still use the property because I do have agricultural, you can use it for agricultural, but I also want to make it, I want to have, the whole reason why I'm here is because I want to make it easier for the public if I have permanent foundations such as like a watchman's quarters or a office or whatnot. So that's the whole reason why I'm here.
It would seem to me you should get back with staff and try to work out something that'll fit your needs, that will meet the requirement, if there is such a thing. I mean, we can't very well, I say we, I can't very well go against what staff recommends, but I'm for what you want to do.
Me too.
Any other comments from any of the staff members?
So would we then postpone this until our next meeting, giving him time to get with staff?
I think it'd be a good idea.
I make a motion that we postpone this until our next meeting.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Second the motion.
Have a second on the motion.
If I may.
Minutes from staff.
Just from the county attorney's standpoint, just to make things clear, if Vice Chair Gillette would amend her motion to a motion to continue, it would clean up the record a little bit.
Oh, I certainly will. Thank you.
I would.
So the motion is to continue the item to the next month.
I would second that same request.
We have a second by Commissioner Abbott. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
And make sure that he understands.
Item 11.
Item number 11 is an evaluation of a request for a rezon of assessor's parcel number 31019006 from an AD airport development zone to an MSD manufacturing special development zone to allow for a sanitizer, cleaners, and disinfectants manufacturing and distribution facility and for the storage, manufacturing, and distribution of flammable and hazardous materials in the Kingman vicinity. Staff is recommending that the conditions for the MSD zone be that the property will have all the uses and limitations of the current AD airport development zone, along with allowing the storage and distribution of flammable liquids for sale and distribution as well as the manufacturing, storage, or distribution of hazardous chemicals or materials will also be allowed. We are putting a maximum capacity of storage tanks on the property to a maximum of 15,000 gallons per tank with no more than 18 storage tanks allowed at any time. Otherwise, standard conditions apply and staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. Opening up the public hearing and the applicant is available. Kathy, you want to speak on it?
Honorable Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Kathy Tackett Hicks. I'm acting as the owner's agent. I'm happy to bring this to the commission. It is another tenant at the airport. It's a good tenant. Hunter did a really nice job in explaining everything. There's already an existing building on this site at 4625. This tenant will hold a portion of that building, not all of it. The special request for the rezon does include the use of the tanks, so they'll have their chemicals in these tanks along with water and whatever distribution they have. They will blend those in the interior of the building. They package them in totes, drums, and tanks. They do use a railroad to get their bulk chemicals in. They have a spur that runs along the property, so it's really a nice setup for them, but they'll be doing the mixing and packaging inside the building and then it will be shipped out. It is used for the sanitizing and disinfecting and stuff for the food and beverage industry. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. But Hunter did a nice job.
You said that he's only occupying a portion of the building?
Correct.
Is the other part vacant?
No, there is someone there.
Which obviously staff wouldn't recommend if the zoning would affect them, I'm assuming correct. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a comment. I served on the board out there at the airport a number of years. That's a gold, that airport is a gold mine for Mojave County. And the city is trying to do a lot of things to help get it there that I, I think is good. Doesn't mean nothing to me financially, I don't own any property out there, but I, where I live, I have looked across there for 35 years and saw the potential there and things didn't happen. I think this is a very good addition to other things that are happening out there. That's just my opinion.
I agree.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you Kathy.
Thank you.
Do we have any one else wishing to speak on item 11? Any speakers for item 11? Okay, close of the public hearing. Does any commissioner have questions, have any other comments at this time? Okay, Chair will now call for a motion.
I'll move to approve item 11 with staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving forward to item 12, monthly reports. We should have all received the monthly reports in an email here in the last couple days. Any comments or questions? Move on to item 13, Commissioner comments limited to announcements, availability, attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. So any commissioner comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming that the staff has done all the, the research and analysis of the landlocked property that we were discussing.
Chairman Jackson, Vice Chair Gillette, yes, we, we worked with the county assessors, or the county assessor and are looking at different options. I believe the county assessor at this point is, is looking into possible changes or possible amendments to statute that, that may further address those issues. But yeah, from a planning and zoning and Development Services standpoint, we, we met with the county assessors and shared some of the, the areas that, that we had concerns with, that the commission had concerns with, and, and from my understanding, she's, she's taken that and working with it.
So we're just waiting for a report from her?
I, I believe she's looking at possible options at this time, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? All right, moving on to item 14, call to the public. Do we have any one wishing to speak? Yes, come forward please.
I'm Ken Works, Yacka, Arizona. I just wanted, I didn't sign a, fill out a request to speak because I hadn't planned to, but I just want to commend Commissioner Gillette for her efforts to make sure that there's no stranded properties, landlocked properties, and it's, the whole system's set up for it to happen unless people are really careful to prevent it. Obviously, if she hadn't have said anything, there could have been a landlocked property in that, in that issue where she brought it up. And Bill Abbott was exactly right. It's, it's, anything over five acres is a, is a state law, it's got to be, or five splits has got to be a subdivision and, and it has to be treated as a subdivision, not as just normal private splits. But I'm, I'm in contact with the legislatures. I'm trying to get some state legislation passed to prevent these landlocked properties and, and I think that issuing permits when there's no, no visible means of accessing the properties is wrong and, and we're going to have to get that changed and that's what I'm contacting my legislators about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other call to the public? Okay, look for a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.